House member present.
Present.
House member.
Here.
House member by voice.
Here.
House member by telephone.
Here.
House member, please.
Here.
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 Oh, he's there.
We heard from Mayor Payette Councilmember Pierce that we could please get a motion to excuse them. So a motion for support. A motion we have to support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carried. We have a spot here now. We have one at the end of the meeting, the public comments. The sheriff would like to give a comment, so we can start out with Sheriff Pollak.
Thank you. Thank you, I do appreciate a few minutes of your time. I'll get right to it. With the new jail, during this time of delay while we've been waiting for the frost to go out, we've just been working the inside of the jail, moving things around, sinks and benches and things like that, to try to make sure that it fits the way we want it to when we're done. But it also gave us an opportunity to work with the whole facility. As you know, we were at a point where we were going to have to put quite a few pylons underneath the base of the jail order to hold it up because of the ground where we were, which we knew the condition of that ground when we bought it. So we decided to build a block. By moving, we found that jail south and east closer toward the animal control shelter and closer toward Willhoun Dry, where the ground is much more firmer, we will now not have to probably put the pylons down, or at least not as many. That's going to save us a considerable amount of money. It also helps bring the funding back into budget and move beyond our droughts. So we were happy we had that opportunity, even though it gravelled me a little bit to have to be, you know, with that old facility. Speaking of the old jail, for the month of January, we had no new issues. But the rain's coming, so beware. Patrol, on January 8th, we replaced all our in-car computers. They were over ten years old. We finally got that done. Last week was a busy week for us. Last weekend, we covered one plane crash out at the airport with one slight injury. And then we had two people that went through the ice on Silver Lake. We put out many, many cautions about the ice this time of year especially. I just was down near those roads on the weekend, and I think there were probably ten or fifteen ice fishermen out there. We stressed that this ice is just not safe and no one should be out there. And this is a good example of why not. The sheriff's monthly activity for the month of January was 681 complaints with 38 arrests, 194 citations, 14 extra patrol requests, one property damage accident with one injured, 13 property damage accidents, 25 car gear accidents, 18 civil disputes, and we booked 150 folks into the jail. As you might remember, we had a, the judges had lowered the bonds. You stay as in a situation now where they're trying to reduce the bonds so more folks can afford those bonds, and we don't have the jail backed up with people waiting to go to jail. And that worked out really well for a while. Down in November, we were down to around 80 people in the jail. That's the lowest we've been in I don't know how long. However, as of today, we're up to 133, because all those FTA warrants for the folks who didn't show up for their bond hearings are not being issued or being picked up. The drug drop-off box took in 55 pounds this month, and if I did mention it the last time I was here, after two terms as your sheriff, I had decided to run for a third term. With passing of the jail village and the beginning of the construction phase, I want to see that project through to its completion. And also, since I was sheriff at the time, we had the drastic reduction of road patrol. Now with the help and the cooperation of the commissioners, thank you Mr. Heselaker, we are getting some folks back, and I would like to be here when the road patrol begins to come back, so that we can really do some sheriff's work and really serve the people that we were voted in to serve. But that will be my report, unless there are any questions. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Council. This afternoon, I wanted to introduce Amy Gallier as the superintendent, Chris Jenkins with the Branch, in the Branch School District. And then I got Officer Long Grant here with me also. We're going to talk a little bit about an initiative that we started back in September. Back in September, it's Handle With Care. It's an initiative that we put in place and we kind of mitigated after a couple other communities started out as a, to help be a better trauma-informed community and to try to help kids that might have experienced some type of traumatic event. And we, as police officers, we come across each affected kid, we share that information to the school, and so the next day when the kids show up to school, they're having some difficulties, the teachers have a better idea that this kid might have had some type of event happen. And so they will explain to you a little bit more about it, and kind of direction that we're kind of trying to still, we'll go with it. So Amy, could I ask her on this one?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share. Branch County kind of had a little bit of a jumpstart on an initiative called Handle With Care that will soon be a statewide initiative, but we have kind of, along with a couple of other counties, taken the lead on getting it going. In the day of 2019, about 12 people from Branch County traveled to Kalamazoo to get some training on Handle With Care and to learn more and what it might look like for Branch County. But essentially, what it is, it's a three, three main components: law enforcement, school systems, and then mental health support. Joe kind of did an overview. Law enforcement, if a law enforcement officer encounters a child that has been exposed to trauma, violence, any kind of traumatic event, a law enforcement officer will contact that designated school and issue a Handle With Care notice. And that simply, that's all that's stated, the child's name and handle that childhood care. The school district then designates school personnel at each building that is provided with appropriate teaching and support staff, and they are notified with this Handle With Care notice before the bell rings the next day, so they're able to, if maybe, put supports in place for that child, but also just keep a heads, keep an eye on that child. If the child falls asleep in class or doesn't have their homework, there's a little more explanation for that child. And then the third component is mental health, so should that child need additional services, and those services can be done right in the home with the collaboration of all the entities involved. With that said, we were able to launch in September, and we feel that it's really important to recognize those that are in the community doing the work and that really keeping children at the forefront of their work. And what we noticed in the first few months of our launch is there, not only did the Cold Water Police Department really stand out specifically for taking the lead, Joe Schein really headed up the whole law enforcement piece for us, with the directive that he shared with the other agencies. So we wanted to thank Joe. And also, the other gentleman is Cody Schein. Cody, oh, I missed. Same height, I doubt that's you. Cody, I would say probably had 90% of the Handle With Care notices that were issued. And what that means is he single-handedly helped these children receive services that they would not have had otherwise. So with that said, we really just want to provide a certificate of recognition on behalf of the Handle With Care team to Joe Schein. You're welcome. And Cody Schein Long Grant. So, does anyone have any questions?
How many incidents have you had of, uh...
Well, at our last meeting, I can tell you, we had 31 Handle With Care notices, and some of them might involve multiple children, multiple families, but...
I just wanted to acknowledge Mark Knack is our technology person, and he did this web-based, so some counties are doing it paper and pencil still, or with email, but Mark set up a web-based system, so there's no chance of perp violation or any other information. They just go in, put in the student's name, put in the officer's name. They have a dropdown list of the schools, so they can just drop down the name of the school, and then student's age.
Yes.
And that's all the information that goes through, so it's very private. And we're being recognized across the state because we're using a web-based system rather than paper and pencil or email. So thanks to Mark for that.
Thank you very much.
Amy, you might want to give a, rather than me make reference to it in a couple minutes, if you want to give a plug for your annual community awards.
So, last year, we started the first annual early childhood community celebration, and the purpose for that is a lot of times, early childhood jobs, childcare does not really come to the forefront. So we will be tomorrow evening celebrating for the second year some early childhood celebrations. We will have about 17 vendors present. It will be at Pro Medica Conference Center tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:30. Wonderful orders. We will be giving out four amazing early childhood awards. We will be awarding Program of the Year, Collaborating Partner of the Year, Family Friendly Business of the Year, and then our big award will go to the Childcare Provider of the Year who has served Branch County for over 40 years. So if you get an opportunity, we'd love to have you attend.
And do you have any other public council members this time?
Yeah, sure.
Good afternoon. I'm Valerie White. I am the Branch County Prosecutor. I have just been going around to meetings, trying to introduce myself to people, because I was appointed this past year. And I just want to put a plug for the Handle With Care. When, when everybody does their part, like the police and the schools, and providing kids with that little bit of extra support, it may be making less work for our office because those kids may not end up in juvenile court, so we really appreciate all that you guys do. I just wanted to tell people that, you know, we're here to serve the county. If you have questions, concerns, just want to stop by, see what our office does, feel free, give our office a call. We'd love to have you stop by.
Any other public council members this time? Seeing now a vote for our consent agenda, these are items we consider to be routine, take them in one motion unless someone appears, or someone of our diminishing audience wishes it removed for explanation. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have our council of February 10th, library advisory members of January 13th, former aldermen of January 14th, and BBA members of December 18th. Is any one of the audience participating removed? Anytime we lift our motion, it's pleased to approve our consent agenda.
Motion to approve? Support.
We have motion, and we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda approved. Billson accounts, tonight we're being asked to approve $347,249. As Councilman Knack pointed out, it's a large, because I think Tom might have given an explanation of why that number is a little larger, just so we all understand it.
Sure. We've actually, we've got two items we're going to talk about briefly. They're kind of related, but they're really separate things. So let me, first of all, let's talk about the payment on your Clemmons. So as you recall, we've been had ongoing litigation with Clemmons, and that has been settled. So we have, it had a settlement where their taxable value was decreased from the year the plan was fully in operation. So decreased 5 million, or 5.7 million dollars. And so, we as the taxing jurisdiction, when that happens, it's our responsibility to actually do the entire amount of the refund, that the amount of refund of $161,000. So we write a check to Clemmons for $161,000, but then we in turn get the money back from the other entities. So in this particular case, we then would bill back the state $51,000, for our schools $14,000, ISD $23,000. $61,000 was actually in the LDFAs. That was money, as you know, it's a tax capture zone, so money from the city and the county was actually sitting in the LDFAs. The general fund in this particular case was actually only affected $1,200, and that was just the, it was admin fees that were in there. But as the taxing jurisdiction, we are the ones that actually do the refund, and then it's our responsibility to bill back the other entities.
The other part, Tom?
And the other one is a check to Osama. What happened there actually was a mistake that they would have made doing their personal property tax returns two years ago. They actually double counted a fairly large amount of personal property, $4.2 million. And so it was essentially within the regular property taxes, which they pay as taxes, but then it was also within their, what we call their manufacturing property. And so they caught their error, they submitted it to the state, state initiative, you know, in order for us to make the refund. So we're refunding, you can see the total check is $79,000. Of that amount, roughly $27,000 relates to the city. So in this particular case, because that money's not captured by the LDFAs, it actually did go into the general fund like it normally would have, and we got that money, now we have to get it back.
Twenty-seven hundred?
Twenty-seven thousand.
It hasn't been on the screen, I don't think.
Yeah, what's, there's multiple accounts that it gets.
Right.
You added up all the different spots. You actually sum up, the effect of the general fund was $27,000, actually about $4,000 affected the road accounts, but again, that's, again, outside of the general fund. But the rest of that, again, we're issuing the $79,000 check to Osama to make them whole, and then we in turn are issuing invoices out to the other entities. In both of these cases, we actually got our money back to the county real fast, so we received that today.
Any questions for Tom? Any other question on the budget while we're down out there, or the bill's filled, I'm sorry? If not, we would like for a motion to approve the payment of $347,249.
Support.
Their motion to support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Bill's page six, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to just tick off a few things relative to what's been going on within the city. First of which, this is the end, every 10 years, we have the U.S. Census, and the U.S. Census means a lot to municipalities in particular, so you'll see a lot of emphasis on the U.S. Census in that coming forward. And so we want to make our residents and the community aware that this is going to take place in the next couple months, and that there are jobs available, in particular jobs for our community that we would also like to encourage our Arabic and Hispanic community to participate in. So with that, there is a website, there is a phone number that persons interested in positions can contact the census directly. But within the city, specifically, we want to encourage people to participate in the census and hopefully outreach into our Arabic and Hispanic communities. You just heard about the Great Start Collaborative and their annual community awards presentation, so I'll move on to the next item, being the final call for board review. Essentially, two weeks from now, we'll do board review through the assessing department, and for those that would like to have an appointment with the city assessor in the board review, that'll take place on March 10th, 11th, and 12th, and if you call the assessor for further information and the schedule of appointment. You'll hear further about our Ride Respect and Read program through the fire department, so I won't take Chief Schmoltz's thunder on that one. Another event coming up shortly is the Mother-Son Night. The registrations are still available for that for young boys, kindergarten to sixth grade, and there are significant other mothers, grandmothers, aunts, and other special women in their lives, so contact the recreation department if you'd like to participate in that. Also with the recreation department, maybe a light at the end of the winter tunnel is the registration of youth baseball and softball, and so that's coming up. We're asking people to register by March 10th for the discounted rates, and opening week is May 18th. One of the projects that you allocated funds for last year was a security upgrade and the replacement of all the locks, the door locks, at the public safety building. That has now been completed and installed, and they are now key fob, much like this building and our other buildings. And so that's greatly increased security over there. Obviously, everything can be handled digitally when you have changes in staffing or wanting to change codes and passwords, so that seems to be working well over there, and that's now in place. And then lastly, the Walk for Warmth is coming up later this week, Wednesday, February 26th, and BPU staff and city staff are participating in that. The money's raised from that. For those that are raised through the city, we'll be going directly back into assisting those citizens within our communities with their heating and utility needs. So with that, that's my report.
Any questions for Keith? If not, you'd like a motion, so would I, to approve the City Manager's Report?
Motion to approve.
Support. Mayor, motion and support, accept the City Manager's Report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number seven, now from Tom regarding the 2019 MERS Annual Statement.
You may have seen these in previous packets, but we thought this would be an opportune time as we lead up to the budget process to just give a little overview of this in preparation for the budget and what it means, what our status of our retirement system is.
So this is actually the, we get this every year, in fact, we get these every quarter. We look at these, these are all like market-based. You know, we get a big actuary report in the spring, and we get all excited about, worked up about that, because that's the report that tells us how much we're going to be paying in the future, and usually it's going to tell us a number that's bigger than it told us the year before. So this one, we're actually going to talk about, and there's actually good news on this report. If we, if you just want to follow along, it starts off showing us what our balance was at the end of last year. We can see where the city has put funds into the, into our account for any year we put in. If you include the employee contributions, it's just under $700,000. The fund distributed $1.3 million to our retirees in the pension plan, and the fund actually earned $1.5 million in admin fees. So at the end of the year, we were actually about $900,000 higher than we were at the beginning. We don't always have good news when we're talking about our pension funds, but in this particular case, we're happy to see that we actually earned 14% last year. In context, the fund lost 4% the year before, so if you net this too together, it's really not that great, but we'll be happy about 2019. Just don't turn on the TV today and see that the stock market went down 1,000 points. And just remind everybody that this is, again, neither, this is based on market numbers, these are actually field dollars. We look at the actuary report, they're all smooth and homogenized, so this actually does mean that there really is $12.2 million in the fund. Any questions? The bad news will be five months from now, and I'll come back and talk about these.
This is funding for the pension that will be stopped in 97.
Correct.
Since 97. There's also another amount of money that we're putting in, employees after 97, on the 401K, so it's...
Correct. Yes.
And this is just the employees that now they're still involved in the pension that we ceased over 20 years ago.
Yeah. We are, as you can see, the city portion, or, you know, we talk about things on a fiscal year, this is not a calendar year, but last year, we put in $656,000 into this fund. This is, you know, I don't know many or six years, but I think even the year that I started here, we were only putting $300,000 into, and that was $150,000 more than two years before, so...
That's in a defined benefit?
Yes.
What's our DC?
Our DC total is, you can say roughly $400,000 if you're looking at the city side.
A lot more employees on that.
Yes. Yeah. So right on, on the pension side, we currently have 11 active employees, so these are people that have been here over 22 years, 11 active employees, and we are roughly 60 retirees that are within the plan.
60 people are comprised of this $1.3 million that paid out under all...
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly.
We've, well, most of it been out of the road, but I'm glad, but just, I refer everybody to say it again, so... Any other questions for Tom? It does affect our budget, obviously, it's...
It does, and if you look, you know, I have to throw a plug in, we will come back, you know, we're doing our first budget of amendments tonight, and we'll come back and do second budget amendments in a couple months, and I'm, you know, my first and second budget amendment is going to be, you know, wanting to do an extra $50,000 in because it's the only way to keep us from going to places we can't afford in later years, so...
The bottom line, our $10 million budget is, which is what you just told me, we're spending over a million dollars just on retirement, on the $10 million budget.
Yes, I did.
That's not salaries, that's not trucks, that's not, you know, personnel, that's not equipment, that's retirement money. You'll see this in the next few weeks also, so thank you, Tom. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Don't go anywhere.
Yeah. Now, Keith Baker regarding the first budget amendment for 2020.
Well, as much as it has my name on it, the credit goes to Tom, so this is the annual process by which we do amendments mid-year. We were reflecting increases in expenses and increases in revenues. As the memo outlines, there's a $15,000 positive in the reduction of the proposed budgeted deficit, and then there's an explanation then of the various changes, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side, with detail following that. So if there are questions specific to what those changes are, Tom can go for those.
I like the outer state system, I had an adjustment, I remember we do this many, several times during the year, resulting in reducing the deficit by $15,000. Does anybody want to incorporate information of the individual?
If you wanted to hit the, there's three, there's three revenue high points, and then there's four or five expenditure changes.
But the biggest thing out of the revenue side is we did, we sold our, we got some money from the ITC, the transmission company, for right-of-way properties, I don't think that was owned, but by the city, we got some money there. Our payment that we get from the state, the annual payment from the LCSA group, which is essentially replacement money for property taxes that we've lost, personal property taxes that we've lost, they perpetually, we've been getting more than we've anticipated, and that has continued this year, so...
And then $69,000 for unallocated for the general property connections?
Yes, so $69,000 is based on different things. All right, so essentially, it was true up of our workman's compensation, we pay that annually, or we actually pay it quarterly, but it, it gets, we were, we under-budgeted that essentially. Workman's comp, we've had a couple large claims in the last few years, and that's all based on the, you know, experience and the floating average, and so we bumped up higher than anticipated this past year. So that was $15,000 of it. The general insurance, $12,000, and then again, it's true up to the current year contract. And then we had, actually, part of what we just talked about with the SAMA, okay, so essentially, the general fund portion of that, the $27,000, that's considered a tax chargeback, because it's not, if it was in the current year, we'd just pull it out of the current year revenue, but it's actually prior year, so we show it on our books as an expense.
Hey, are you looking for approval for the budget amendments?
Yes.
Move to approve the budget amendments for 2019, 2020.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number nine, one from Keith regarding first and second ward sidewalk.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you may recall, this time last year, we talked as one of the budget priorities, the repair of sidewalks. We issued bids late last year for sidewalk repairs. Those, one, we got only a few bids, and those bids were quite high, so we shelved those and came back this winter to rebid the project, and you have four bids in front of you for repairs of sidewalks from the first and second wards. They're going to be sporadic through both of those wards. They're based on the reports that have been done the last two summers. They're based on the reports that have been done the last two summers for those areas and hitting the, those sections that require repair. One particular block that would get repaired on both sides for the entire length of the block would be Perkins from Division to Hudson is a particularly bad place. That also gets a lot of pedestrian traffic.
Keith, what about Perkins between Sprague and Allen Street? There's no sidewalk at all on either side.
So what we've done, what's been the direction in the past, if it doesn't currently have sidewalk, this is intended to repair an existing sidewalk.
I think the road's pretty bad shape there too. So, you know, I see a lot of people walking on the road, which is in terrible shape, but I think it's a best and safe issue too, people walking on the road. There's no option, walk on the sidewalk on either side. So I don't know if that can be looked at or added to your list.
I think we could talk about it at the budgetary workshop too. So that road needs to be replaced as well and it would be most cost effective to do it as part of the reconstruction, which that block really needs. But yes, this is just addressing repairing of existing rather than any new construction.
And we have to speed, this was a project that we, last year, we talked about taking some money out of our savings, so to speak, and doing some special one-time thing. This is kind of a result of that. We don't normally do this, but we're part of using the general fund dollars for something of benefit for the whole community.
How much did we figure that was going to, did we plan on spending up to?
150, so.
What was the bid last fall?
300 plus, two to three million dollars. It was late in the season and everyone was busy, so.
A question for us, as you can see in the memo, Parrish actually made a little bit of a low bid. We have at times provided a bid to a local contractor, even if it was a modest amount, a low. The downside to that is sometime you will dissuade outside bidders from bidding. But we cut the council and Parrish has obviously been a very good person, so to speak, he's been a very good partner with the city on some projects, notably the Little League. I guess something to talk about and we can afford the bid to whoever we decide. Our staff recommending Parrish or you're leaving that up to us?
Well, we've drafted the resolution as we typically would with the lowest bidder. We've checked references, we've communicated directly with them. They actually, in fact, being from the Flint area, they too, that area has local preference ordinances. And so when I expressed to him that this might be part of the discussion, they understood because they've been the beneficiary of that in the past. But yes, it's entirely up to your discretion as to what the parameter is and how far off from the low bid you're willing to accept. We've drafted the resolution to approve WT Stevens for the project.
Are there any local rapidities for WT Stevens? Anybody in the area that's used them before?
No, but he drove down there looking to, they saw the bid, something they thought was in their wheelhouse. They do a lot of work in the Genesee County area, Flint and Birmingham and that area.
Apples to apples on this one. I'm sure everything's engineered, so the depth of the concrete, maybe.
One-year warranties, the mix of the concrete, yeah, it's all pretty.
And probably the masking repair afterwards.
It's just backfill with topsoil and seed. They'll try to minimize the disturbance, but honestly, there's always.
I see some kind of different contractors, maybe. The backfill's not quite as deep up to the curb and different things. Following here, it doesn't look quite as nice and show me some stuff, so. And I know Parrish is a little cutesy, top notch.
Any other questions? What's your pleasure, we were meeting a motion to award the bid, the amount or whichever bid.
I move we accept the bid from Parrish ex paid for $141,990.
I'll second that.
Any other kind of discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number 10, letter from Megan regarding remote attendance at council meetings due to military service. Megan?
Yes, as the letter explains, we normally would be trying to avoid having council members participate in meetings who are not physically present in the room. But the Open Meetings Act was amended in 2018 to require us to accommodate persons with military service obligations. And in speaking with Pat Poole, for example, and others here at the city, it seems that we can set up two-way communication so that if Ms. Rissman is going to be away during a council member, a council meeting, we will be able to allow her to participate in meeting fully through two-way communication. And the resolution just kind of sets a little bit of a process up for her and us to make that accommodation. Questions?
Did the change in the law just affect the military, not other, any other emergencies or other cases?
The change in the law is specific to those with military duty obligations.
So our action would be to adopt a resolution 2006. Move about the details? I make that motion, so.
Move to adopt resolution 20-06.
Support.
Yeah, motion we have support. And Tom?
Should I not vote on this since I'm the one who gave the advice?
No.
Because it's all.
Any.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Just forward to seeing on the big screen. Letter from Megan regarding approval of the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement for Buckeye Cable.
Sure.
It's not thinking of Ohio State, is it?
Well, Buckeye. When, when the CBPU stopped providing cable services, this particular kind of cable service customer was, had some limits to the options that were available. So this is not a whole series of accounts. This is a big account of many different units receiving cable service, being Chromatica Hospital. And so they obtained cable services from this Buckeye broadband in Northwood, Ohio. And because Buckeye is now a cable service provider inside of City Coldwater, it has to have a cable franchise agreement with the City of Coldwater. And this is a standardized agreement. They get them from the state's website. And we earn a lot of, a lot of changes to it. We do put in here that they will collect and pay to us 5% of their gross revenue. And that's what we use across the board for all cable providers.
And is that the max, 5%?
It is, it's the max. And the only other option would be we could have them help pay for PG channel if we had one. So that's not really relevant here. So I'm asking you to consider, and if you think appropriate, to go ahead and vote on the resolution. I will say that Buckeye has been providing for some time without a franchise agreement and we even talked with them and they say that they fully intend to make us whole the 5% that they haven't been paying us while they have been providing cable services to the hospital. So while I would like you to go ahead and pass the resolution, I would like it to be conditioned on us getting satisfactory assurances from them that they won't be providing payment to us of the missing 5%. They have verbally agreed to that, but they have not yet. We haven't totally worked out when that payment will arrive.
Did we bring this request to them?
No. Yes, because they must, because they're providing the service.
How would you like, if you were to ask us to approve it, after the resolution, approve the agreements subject to the details of the payment being worked out?
That is what I would like.
I heard somebody say that, I don't know who though. I mean, any other agreements you may have like this, who we have?
We have one with Skitter. We have.
Spectrum.
Frontier.
Frontier.
Yep, Frontier. I can't remember, can you tell from the payment sign?
Well, the payments that we get come through spectrum charter, that's where we're getting the money. It's coming in. We do have an agreement like this, 5% franchise with, we get this on the spectrum nowadays. We can pay quarterly for that.
Can regular customers purchase them or not?
No, their footprint, if you look on the drawing, is just the hospital.
Would it give them the right to if they wanted to expand without any other action on our part?
They are entitled to expand, but they have to give notice to us of what their expansion would be. My understanding is that they have entered into similar contracts with Chromatica in other locations. So their relationship is really with Chromatica, not with the entire.
That may not be the intent, but they could by notifying us that they were going to expand.
And could we have some along this?
Our options are to object to the form of the agreement. This is the state form they provide. There isn't anything here that we can object to. Or to the terms of the agreement and we're getting the maximum from them. We have no previous agreement with them that this, you know, aggregates terms that we previously negotiated with them, that might be a way of getting more out of them if we had a previous agreement. But they are not a big number of providers, they're a brand-new provider alone.
And if the hospital sells to the new group owner, group, doesn't use their service and just goes away?
That would be between them and the new owner. But I would think when you go to the hospital, you expect to have access to TMs. So whoever the owner is, is going to be looking to have that service from some source. I believe that their contract comes from us. No, it doesn't. He's running it.
They get some, the hospital does get some services from us, but they switch to Chromatica because they want a direct place to their systems. Apparently they have their own service right from Chromatica.
For Internet?
Yes, whoever's streaming, who the carriers, that's right.
Jeff, does this have any potential down the road when that fiber system is in? Could that make people look and say, I'd like to provide this service?
It opens up services to everybody when we have our system in there. So for instance, YouTube, Hulu, they're basically doing the same thing now. We're just not getting any franchise fees. And that's always kind of the downside is because when you go over the top, you don't pay any franchise fees or true streaming. So it's no different than that.
So the BPU have no problem with reporting after approval?
We have no choice.
Look at Megan would suggest we adopt a little bit of the old 07, 8, 4, subject to the financial payment treaty workout. Motion. Report. Final question? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Finally, number 12, presentation of our 2019 annual fire department report by our fire chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thanks to give this opportunity, we would refer you to share some of the highlights of things that you experienced in 2019. So what last year, I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to try to pull out. It's not coming up. What I'm going to try is I'm going to try to pull out some of the highlights from the annual report that you'll be receiving in your packets and just kind of pull over some of the highlights and things like that to try to make this kind of cook through here real fast. So with that, shall I have people head toward the next slide? All right, so in 2019, we were actually receiving placing the service of 27 new self-contained breathing apparatuses and that's based off of the grant we received actually from 2017 in the amount of about $200,000 and costs us about $10,000 out of our portion that we had to cover. So we were able to put those in service, which was fantastic. Received a grant for $2,000 for Michigan Gas for some new nozzles. Again, each one of those nozzles runs between $700 and $800. So we were able to purchase five of those, a little bit coming out of my budget to bring that up. And those replaced probably nozzles in the maintenance service before I was born. So they're pushing a good 50 years old, so it was good to replace those. So then we were able to, with the support of council, we were able to replace all of our hose. It was non-compliance for the current NFPA 1962. That was a great, great purchase for us. We've been able to implement a personal protective equipment replacement schedule simply because we don't want to come to youth, as we talked last year, and drop a $20,000 bill idea. We're trying to put this work, purchasing four or five sets every year, so it becomes that annual purchase. And that tends to make Tom a little happy, that makes the budgeting a little bit easier. And as he said, we started this year the Read, Respect and Write program at Jefferson Elementary. And just to kind of give a 10,000 foot view of what that program is, we just feel as the fire department that we need to be more involved with the youth of the community, not so much just always talking about fire prevention. Now, when we go in and do some of this, we work some of those angles into our program. But we really feel that we need to want to try to help hold and provide that for the youth. So what we came up with was a program based off of Marshall's reading model that we wanted to kind of do through the whole school year. And the program has an award or an opportunity at the end. So the children, what they do is they read and they log all their minutes. And then we wanted to put the respect component within it where again, where they have to be respectful, respectful of the teachers, for the students. And that's operated by the teachers. And then at the end of March, they calculate all of that and then the teachers award two students from second grade and two students from third grade to come become honorary firefighters with us for the day. So sometime in May, I believe it's May 18th, the former winners and their parents will arrive at the fire station right around 7:30, about our shift change. And they will be at that time awarded a official fire department t-shirt. And then Sue doesn't know this yet, but she should be there at 7:30 to swear each one of the children in. McDonald will be there and the radio station's already set up. So they'll get sworn as honorary firefighters. And then they'll sit down and have breakfast with us from McDonald's. Funny thing is, I forgot, I was excited when I was actually talking. So after they have breakfast, then we'll do what we call a VIP tour of the station where we'll take them to places where most of the general public doesn't get to see. I can see upstairs a lot of the locker room and stuff like that. And then when that's all said and done, then we're going to pile into the fire trucks. The ones that aren't in service are that staff for that day. And then we're going to proceed down, down Division to Marshall and then down Hall. Basically a parade style, lights and sirens going. Take them right to school and then we're going to pull into the circle area right there at Jefferson, I believe at this point. Again, making all kinds of noise. The goal is to have all the students out there to arrive or, you know, it's like honoring the kids as they come off. I've actually kind of done this program once back in defiance. And when we pulled up the first time, the whole school was going crazy. The kids got out of the trucks, they're running up and down, high-fiving and stuff. So we're trying to get this program kicked off. If this is successful with the second and third graders, the goal then is to move it on to another school so we can start to expand that and move it throughout. So again, pretty excited about that program from our standpoint. One of the things, again, I can't say enough, I really appreciated the support last year when we adopted the NFPA 1. It's definitely helped us to move us into the next decade. One of our goals that we set for 2019 was to get all the career personnel certified at the fire officer one and two level, which was about 80 hours worth of training per each individual. And we were able to accomplish that through this past summer. So that helps us to become more compliant then with Michael Part 74 where it says that anybody that has an opportunity that might have to ride what we call the right seat or the officer position, has to have these certifications. And that does happen frequently when we call people back in and maybe we have multiple alarms. For example, a person that just is a driver operator, if he has to act as an officer by Michael, he needs to have those certifications. So we were able to bridge that gap, which was fantastic. We also wanted to bring in an outside class. So we brought in a gentleman from up north, he came in and taught a forceful entry class and he brought down a simulator that allows us to practice open doors, inward outward swinging, metal doors, commercial type style doors, which we just never get a chance to do because we just don't have those types of buildings. Even when we get into, to do some training on some of the polite. Even when we get into to do some training on some of the blighted buildings, for example, the one on Honesum Street, those are all interior residential doors. I mean, we blast through those no problems. That steel door that we'd like to try to breach. And the simulator also allowed us to breach the blocks. So, you know, your master locks, things like that, we're able to break through that. And once hopefully we'll start going more advanced, we learn how to pick some of those blocks and pull cylinders and stuff so we do less damage when we're trying to get into a building. Another thing was identified last year was what we call the low frequency, high risk calls. And those are those types of calls where we're going into confined spaces, out on the water, ice, things like that. Where it's just real low frequency, but yet our risks to safety is incredibly high. And we just weren't all on the same page where everybody was trained to the same level. So what we started doing monthly is we brought Captain Trailing back in, who is the lead on the Region 5 team, which we're really lucky to have. So he was coming in. So once a month, each shift is four hours of this technical rescue type training. They're all being taught the same way. So we're all speaking the same language. So when that does come in, it's going to make us that much more successful. We wanted to send some of our people away to schools. So we sent the fire marshal out to the National Fire Academy in Amesburg, Maryland, where he did some fire prevention training. And that's going to help us not only with our ISO rating, but also bring us some new ideas. Anytime we can send somebody to NFA, it's fantastic training. The only thing, the cost of the city, depending on if they go for the week or the two weeks, is just the meal ticket. And then if they choose to take their car, the photogerman extra reimburses us for mileage. So at the most, the city is usually out about $260 for a two week class. At what I would consider the top notch trainers around the country that are able to show up. And then we also send some people out to do some tactical training as well. We identified one of the components within that ISO, the community risk reduction category, was they require us to try to touch every individual within the community and give them some sort of training on fire prevention. So we tried to get a little bit creative with this. And the fire marshal came up with the idea to stuff the utility bills twice a year with fire safety education material and then just home safety stuff. So like in the wintertime, fireplace maintenance, furnace maintenance and stuff. So we started that program. So we should see the next flyer coming out, I believe, or I think it's somewhere in the May areas. We'll talk about tornado safety and stuff. But that's going to help get us that extra credit, some of that line item in the ISO that we're shooting for. And again, in the ISO report, we were hurting or we got zero points for pre-plans. Now, we were always doing pre-plans, but it was just the fire marshal who was going out doing that. Well, we decided because ISO for one said that all company level personnel needed to do these pre-plans. And also we wanted to start doing that simply to get these guys, our staff, into those buildings so that they become familiar with it. Even when we used to do the rental audi inspections, I can remember back, we'd catch a call at one of those houses. It just helped to know the layout. So we have actually been able to get into about a third, if not a half at this point, all the commercial businesses within the city. And then by the end of the year, we'll circle back around and we'll have 100% of those completed. Which when ISO does arrive back in next October, we'll be able to collect all those points, which is worth about 25 in that category, which is actually a huge component for us to go out again. So that's pretty good. And then lastly, one of the things that I'm incredibly proud of is the county fire chiefs have been working tremendously hard to work together to, for lack of better words, when I sat there, I said, one of my goals and the other fire chiefs agreed with this is to basically have us all operate as a county fire department, but guess they'll have our economy. And one of those first things and those first steps was to work out the same policies and procedures. And last month, we actually adopted four policies of how we're going to talk on the fire ground, how we're going to lay in, how we're going to put hydrants, all the basic stuff that we need. But it's going to make us far more efficient when we start working together as a group. So to me, that's a gigantic step in this county for us to actually start working together and to get to that point where it's not about you cross into my area, you know, get out of my sandbox. It's really about the customer service. I'm really, really proud of those accomplishments. So moving on, just to kind of give you again, a couple, a rehash of this, our last year. As you can see, our total calls for service were about 18 calls less than last year. So we kind of hit that little stagnant level, 1422 for the year. And that encompasses everything we've done call wise, fires, EMS, technical rescue, everything. And we'll break that down a little bit as we proceed through. So this next slide is one of the new ones that I've added this year. Since we went to the new recording system, it allowed me to categorize by wards and where all the calls were. So as you can see, Ward 2 happened to be our busiest section. Now, that doesn't mean that it's any worse or any better than anything else. It just happens that some of those calls were there. So for example, if I remember right, like, keep on a couple of laurels. No, on Michigan Avenue, 90 North Michigan Avenue. It's not the laurels. It's used to be carried in.
It's still, it's the laurels.
It's the laurels. It is laurels. It's changed, we got it. But anyway, we run there a lot. So I think that's where some of those calls are going to jump in. And this encompasses again, fire EMS, the whole, the whole suite. This next graph I like to show simply because we talk a lot about how the calls go. So since 2004, as you can see, you have peaks in your valleys, peaks in your valleys. And that's just the way the fire services is always operated. So we took a big hit in 2016 and 2017, and now we're starting to work our way back up. I anticipate we're going to peak and then come back down here in the next few years. So then we break it down into structural fires, cookie fires, and you know, what I consider chimney fires. Some of the ones that were actually putting water on the fire. And we've had, for whatever reason, in 2019, we had a significant jump to the tune of about 133%, if my math was right. Some of those fires were equating to Schmitz phone. They were working through some of the processes and we were going there pretty regularly for fires within their furnaces. And I think they've got it down to where their cleaning is taken care of in most of those. But even that, we're still, if we said it was about 10 of those fires, we're still up. And we've looked at the data and I just can't, I can't put a finger on exactly why we're up. The economy's doing good. That's usually when we see things start to decrease. So for whatever reason, we're kind of up this year. And then I also added this year a chart where it talks about property value saved and lost. And so we saved over $76 million worth of property based off of all these fires that we responded to. And we lost $2.1 million. A million of that 2.1 was the bowling alley fire. The property was still valued at a million and we all saw the results of that fire. So our EMS, as we talked about last year, EMS is always going to keep going up for the reasons populations getting older, people are living longer. We're up about 6% from last year. Not surprised by this graph at all. It's just, that's just the nature of the beast. So between us and life care, we're holding our own, trying to get everybody taken care of. Looking more a little bit at EMS, cardiac arrests, we had 22 cardiac arrests in 2019, which is a number that I wanted to highlight. And then the other one is as I started categorizing lithocysts at 52. And what a lithocyst is, an XX one on one today, is nothing more than somebody who falls down, doesn't have any injuries. They just need help getting backup. So we did 52 of those in 2019, if everything was entered correctly within the system. Talking with life care, they're experiencing the same type of trend. Lithocysts are just starting to grow. So it's not an emergency call technically, but yeah, it's still something that we provide to citizens. If somebody needs help getting up off the ground, we go and help them. Everybody was asked about response times. So in 2019, we actually improved quite significantly, I believe, not only within the city, but within the township. The goal is always to try to be underneath four minutes, as with the NFPA standard of four minutes with that first arriving piece of apparatus and then with eight minutes with the rest of the. I tend to focus on the first arriving piece because I think it's a good reflection of us, which you see in a lot of our calls, our first arriving apparatus is there. We're able to actually mitigate the situation at that point. So that second coming in, it's not obsolete, but again, we're handling that with that first in and we're meeting those times, which is good. A little bit slower on Gerard by a couple of seconds this year as opposed to the last. Yet we're still doing pretty good on our response times. We get asked always, you know, busiest days of the week, busiest times. This one always kind of surprises me that Saturday is Sunday, based on us, would actually be the slower of the days. And for whatever reason, I don't know why Wednesday is up there saying in second place. I don't know what happens on Wednesdays, but we're up there. Of course, everybody would think Fridays. And the chart that I did put in here this year was a timeframe of the 24 hours. And our busier times run anywhere from 10, 11:00 in the morning till about 8:00 at night is where our peaks are. But keep in mind that any of these charts, it doesn't give us that crystal ball to say, okay, we're only going to staff it at this time. It's just things come in when they come in. This just kind of gives you a trend of what we're looking at. Training hours. So we blew this one out of the water. So we tried to shoot for 192 hours based off of what the ISO requires us. And then MyoShi requires 12 hours of officer training, another 12 hours of driver's training, so on and so forth. So we did about 298 hours of training per person. That's including our paid personnel. So we're $6,500 for the year. A lot of that too, you know, I'm going to equate to the officer classes that we sent people away for for those 80 hours. So next year, I don't anticipate it being that high, but I certainly anticipate us being well over the 192. So I'm very proud of the crews for putting that together. Inspections and preventions. This is the fire marshal's area with some support from the line staff. Fire Marshal Shaw was able to do 338 inspections, which is outstanding. He's doing a bang up job with that. On 31 of re-inspections, we had 32 CO detectors installed. 25 investigations, again, hence the number of fires that we had this year. And then we were able to actually reach about 8,000 people actually during our presentation. Which again, the public relations events, we were able to do 77 in one year, which, you know, based off of the last four years, the best we were able to do before was 44. So we were able to double that with the crews and the fire marshal going out and taking care of those projects. So how do I sort of wrap this up? So next year, some of the goals are, this year for 2020 is we want to keep exploring ways to reduce that ISO in the preparation for the coming up evaluation in October. So we're looking through things that we can do to get as close. As long as dispatch stays, nothing changes there. And I don't have any control over that. As long as that number comes in the same. And we're going to get some extra points through the water department because of the last evaluation. There's a program that they didn't count. So our water, our water score should be pretty darn close to perfect. So I'm excited about that component. And then some of the things that we're doing internally at the fire departments, I think it's going to be close. It's going to be close. We'll get into that too. So we're going to keep pushing on that. So with training, we want to start participating more with Quincy. We're going to do some conjunction training with them this May. We're going to do auto education down at the salvage yard. Half of my department, half of Quincy's, we're going to get together for one class. We're going to train for three days and then a week later, the rest of them are going to come together. And then the other departments in the county are going to be the exact same class that we're putting on. So again, it's all about that same type of training. We've had a couple of calls here in 2019, or in 2019 where it was surface water rescue and we were kind of lacking in that. So we're bringing in another instructor to provide some surface water rescue. And then still continue to send people to off-site trains. For the emergency response component, Quincy and Bronson, we're doing a lot of discussions about automatic aid, which is again, unprecedented for us. I still want to try to get our per pay staffing up to nine. We're running at about seven right now. And then again, still try to replace your eight. So with that, I'm asking any questions?
Questions, ready?
Just like to point out that ISO, it's an insurance rating. And in addition to just the pride in which the department might want to apply to the lower the number, the better, it has a direct correlation to reducing our property insurance premiums. So that's the practical advantage of the lower that we can get that number, the higher we can make the percentage in property insurance discounts.
Correct. If we were able to hit that number two, we would be the 16th or 17th city in the state of Michigan and would have that.
Question? You can have that with a health standing report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for the support.
Thank you. Any public comments at this point? Any notes on any unfinished business at council level? Do you have any good thoughts at council?
So, we've had to sort of wrap this up. So next year, some of the goals are, this year for 2020 is we want to keep exploring ways to reduce that ISO in the preparation for the coming up evaluation in October. So we're looking through things that we can do to get as close, as long as dispatch stays, nothing changes there. I don't have any control over that. As long as that number comes in the same, and we're going to get some extra points through the water department because of the last evaluation, there's a program that they didn't count. So our water, our water score should be pretty darned close to perfect. So I'm excited about that component. And then some of the things that we're doing internally at the fire departments, I think it's gonna be close. It's gonna be close if we get into that too. So we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep pushing on that. So with training, we want to start participating more with Quincy. We're gonna do some conjunction training with them. This May, we're gonna do auto education down at the salvage yard. Half of my department, half of Quincy's, we're gonna get together for one class. We're gonna train for three days, and then a week later, the rest of them are gonna come together. And then the other departments in the county are doing the exact same class that we're putting on. So again, it's all about that same type of, same type of training. We've had a couple of calls here in 2019, or in 2019 where it was surface water rescue, and we were kind of lacking in that. So we're bringing in another instructor to provide us some surface water rescue, and then still continue to send people to off-site trainings. For the emergency response component, Quincy and Bronson, we're doing a lot of discussions about automatic aid, which is, again, unprecedented for us. I still want to try to get our per-pay staffing up to nine. We're running at about seven right now, and then again, still try to replace your eight. So with that, I'll ask you, any questions?
Questions?
Just like to point out that ISO, it's an insurance rating, and in addition to just the, the pride in which the department might want to apply to the lower the number, the better. It has a direct correlation to reducing our property insurance premiums. So that's the practical advantage of the lower that we can give that number, the lower we, the higher we can make the percentage in property insurance discounts.
Correct. If we were able to hit that number two, we would be the sixteenth or seventeenth city in the state of Michigan if we'd have that.
Question?
You know, that was a health standing report.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Nick, for the support.
Thank you. Any public comments at this point? Any notes, any unfinished business at council level? Do you have any good news at council? Any comments?